This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Let us call the meeting to order. So, calling to order, the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for February 14th, 2023. So, we have a quorum, so let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay. All righty. Well, Happy Valentine's Day, everybody. After our last marathon meeting, I am promising to all of us that we will not be here very long this evening. We will do our business efficiently. I don't expect lots and lots of long discussions, hopefully, here. And I definitely have committed to getting out of here by 8:00, if not earlier. So, you can hold me to that. And if we don't get done, well, we'll have to figure that out. But anyway. So, with that, do we have any open time for the public?
Yeah.
Hearing none. Okay. We have no hearings and no real presentations tonight. However, we do have a report for the Select Board. So, we're rolling right through this meeting, Jen. So, we have Jen Day, our Treasurer Collector. So, Jen, why don't you come on up? And what we may do, we'll have you do your report, and then I may, we'll see if we can maybe tie in some of your other topics here, too, so that you don't have to spend all night staying out here.
All right. Sounds good. All right. So, on my report, I kind of combined the current priorities, activities with future, just to let you know. So, I separated into Collector's side and Treasurer's side. So, on the Collector's side...
I didn't think we had a copy, did we? No?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Maybe you can send one around later on, or whatever. Go ahead.
Okay.
Let's see.
On the Collector's side, so right now, we're preparing to send demand bills for the fiscal year '23 water commitment, number two. We'll also be issuing the fiscal year '23 commitment, number three, water bills, the second week in March. So, the Water Department will bring us the handhelds the week of the 21st. So, we actually load all the routes onto the handhelds for them. The following week, they'll go out and they'll read all the meters, and then they'll return the handhelds. And at that point, we load the reads into the software, create the bills, send them out for any reads that didn't pick up. They might have to go out and do manual reads. And we should issue the bills the week of March 9th.
March 9th.
Yeah, they should be issued, actually, on March 9th. We're preparing to send the first tax title letter on fiscal year '22 real estate taxes, although it's the first official, like, tax title letter. It's not the first notice. There was a demand sent prior, and also an outstanding balance letter. So, currently, we have about $50,000 in fiscal year '22 unpaid real estate, which really isn't so bad.
Can you just repeat that number again?
$50,000. Yeah. So, tomorrow, motor vehicle excise commitments, number one, for 2023 and seven for 2022, will go out. These commitments total about $7,500 bills and about $847,000 in collections. So, you know, in the future, on the collection side, we'll be very busy. The motor vehicle excise bills will be due mid-March. You know, we'll be issuing water bills at the beginning of March, which will be due in April. And we'll be mailing out the quarter for real estate bills at the end of March, which will be due May 1st. So...
Could you go back over the excise ones again? You said $7,500?
It's about $7,500 bills and $847,000 in collections.
Wow.
Yeah. So, that's always fun.
Okay.
So, that was what I had on the Collector's side. As far as the Treasurer's side, you know, obviously, right now, the most important is closing fiscal year '22 with Bradley. And we are so close. I really expect that that will be complete by the end of next week. And I'm not sure. So, once we do that, I believe then he can work. Like, does he do the Schedule A? Like, I don't know how that goes exactly. Okay. So, and then, as far as fiscal year '23 goes, I have receipts entered through the end of December. I believe your report only had them through December 13th. And that's okay. It's just because they're not reviewed yet. I am reconciled by myself through November of 2022. I haven't reconciled any fiscal year '23 yet with the accountant, because we're working on '22. But as soon as we're done, I really believe, like, once we get done with '22, you know, I do believe that fiscal year '23 will move really quickly. And that, I honestly think that we'll be able to be up to date within the next, like, three-month period. So, I'm confident in that. What else?
And then that will continue being up to date?
Yes, hopefully, as long as all goes well. Yeah. Because, I mean, because, you know, I know when the prior accountant was here, we were always, you know, a couple of months, like, behind, but nothing like this. You know, this is having, not having that accountant for a year is really, like, hurt, and it's hard to catch back up, you know? So, but we're getting there.
When you say that you should be kind of up to date, there's still going to be a lag time, right?
There's always a lag time.
Is that, like, a month?
Yeah. Like, I would say that, you know, for, you know, say it's January, reconciling January should be able to be complete by the end of February, you know, by the following month. Yeah. What else do I have here? So, I completed the data collection and submitted it to our actuarial for the fiscal year '22 full evaluation for the GAZB-75 report. So, that report determines our OPEB liability. So, as of right now, our OPEB liability is $7,797,000. Sorry, $7,797,095 dollars. We have, that's the net OPEB liability after, like, what we have in the OPEB account.
Jen, is that the entire town, including the Water Department?
Yes.
But excluding schools?
No, that includes the school.
Includes the school?
Yeah. Let's see. So, there's that. So, unemployment, I just noted that that's been really low this year, so that's good. I haven't even touched our budget due to getting credits back from fraudulent claims that we had paid on during, like, the COVID time, when all the fraudulent claims were happening. So, we ended up getting reimbursed about $3,300, I think. And now, we still have a credit balance of, like, $1,700. So, they don't give the money back to you. They keep it as a credit. Yeah. Mm-hmm. I know. Let's see. Just in FYI, the Insurance Advisory Committee voted to increase health insurance rates by 6% this year for fiscal year '24. And they're looking to probably do another 6% also for fiscal year '25. And then, so, I didn't, like, really prepare much on investments. So, I know that we were going to discuss possibly, like, Sue Kelly from Bartholomew coming out, and I thought we could do something more than.
Yeah. We did find, just for anybody who's listening, we had talked about whether or not we had an investment policy. And lo and behold, we did do one back in 2019. And so, that was in our package. Just for information, we're not going to take it up tonight.
Okay.
It might be, depending on what else we've got on the schedule, if not for the 28th and the following March meeting, I think it would be good to have a more full discussion about, you know, what do we have in there? What's being invested? And is there something that should be invested? We've got CPA funds, I know, that are invested. That was a question we had. I mean, there's things that I think would be good for all of us to understand what funds are being invested in.
Yeah. So, yeah.
So, we can see whether it might make sense, I don't know, to have the person from Bartholomew come. We could maybe...
Yeah, and they are willing to do that. So, they were available either of those dates that you had given me. So, she's good to do that.
All right. We'll see.
She would just, like, maybe a little more detail on exactly what she's talking about.
I would say, from my point, I'm good with the long-term investment. I'd like to see the year-end report, the June 30th report that Bartholomew puts together every time.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that's pretty much set. So, I can, me and Bradley have, like, one more thing to clear up on that.
Okay. So, if it's still in the works, I know we got the one two years ago, you know, from the end of that. But my questions are more around reserve funds and general fund investments.
Okay.
Yeah. And you said that you get a quarterly report as well, that you've got your year-end for June of '22, but then you're getting quarterly updates.
Right, from Bartholomew, yeah. But that's, like, the trust funds and OPEB, and it's not really, it's not general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
All right. So, I don't, I don't really have any budget concerns. Everything seems to be on track right now, as far as that goes. I don't have any, I don't have grants to talk about. I don't think they ever have opportunity for grants in my office, so I'll skip that part. So, personnel staffing updates. As you know, probably know, my Assistant Treasurer Collector resigned. Her last day was February 9th. So, I have PCFs on tonight's agenda to move my clerk, Angela, to the Acting Assistant and to hire Robin temporarily as the Administrative Clerk, 10 to 15 hours per week. So, you know, just to let you know, like, Angie learned the clerk position quickly. She's already made some great changes to that position. She, like, sees things and knows, she can see things, and she sees how to make them more efficient. So, she's changed some job processes. She's updated forms. She's done a really great job. She has 11 years of experience that pertain to my office. She has done utility billing, collections, payroll, personnel, human resource. And, yeah, so, there's that on personnel.
We'll come back right around.
We'll come back to that.
Yeah, we won't. We'll do our reports, and then I think I'll, so you won't have to stay here. We'll come back around to those PCFs, so we can talk about them.
Yeah. So, any, like, long-term issues, I guess, from my office, it's really just about, at this point, maybe, like, and I know we're doing a compensation plan, so hopefully, the Collins Center, you know, I'm hoping that with that, we can bring those positions up, as far as rates of pay. I know that I actually already have people interested in the position. And one of my previous clerks, she left in December of 2021 to work at Chicopee Electric and Light and has expressed interest in coming back. However, I know she's not going to come back for what the job pays now.
As the clerk position?
Right. But she was great in the position. She was really great to work with, and she was great with the public. And I just feel like, for my office to run its best, I need to be able to retain qualified staff that have experience and knowledge of the job, you know? Because every time we lose someone, like, right now, I'm doing payroll. So, you know, now I'm not doing my position anymore. I'm doing the assistant. So, that's all I have there. And then, for suggested tools and resources, I just put the software upgrade, which we're working on. So, and that's, that's all I got.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Jen? I just had one. There's one that I think we did a couple of years ago, where we had not done some upfront payment. I'm thinking it was insurance or something like that, where we didn't get a discount because we had not...
We always got, in the retirement, oh, we always get the discount.
So, we pay upfront?
We pay one time, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Isn't that an audit issue, like, a couple of years ago or something?
No, no, not in the retirement, no.
No? Okay. So, when we have discounts like that, we can pay upfront and pay a lump?
Yeah, we always take the one-time payment. Yeah. We had an issue where they billed us incorrectly, and we had to do the $6,000 transfer.
Right.
But that's, that's all I can think of. I don't know.
Okay. All right. Nothing? Anybody? All right. Well, thanks for that. And if you want to hang in there a little bit, we'll come back around to you.
Okay. Sure. Thank you. Should I sit down, or just stay up here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead and sit down.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on, then, to Town Administrator Report.
We are still tweaking the voice-over IP telephone system to fine-tune it to the way we would like it best to work. Chris Sorensen from Valley Communication and TVX, and David Rux from the Technology Committee have been extremely helpful in this process. Denise Carver started in the position of Assistant Town Accountant yesterday. Bradley Axon has started her training. Jerry Paquette, Veteran Service Officer, will be deployed to active duty starting February 28th. He will be deployed through June. He has arranged for the Part-Time Assistant Veteran Service Agent in East Hampton, Michelle Bennett, to fill his absence and serve the veterans of Southampton while he is away. The arrangement is that we should pay Michelle his monthly stipend instead of to Jerry while she is filling in for him. The RFQ request for qualifications for the Public Safety Building Complex feasibility study is available again. It went live as a notification on COMBIES last Tuesday, February 7th, was advertised in the legal section of the Daily Hampshire Gazette on February 10th, and will be published in the Central Register tomorrow, February 15th. Responses are due back to the town by Thursday, March 16th. We have received notification from the state that we are receiving a 2023 cybersecurity training grant to help train the town staff to help recognize potential spam and phishing threats through the Internet. Pioneer Valley Planning held their annual project updates for the TIP list last week. Randall Kemp and I participated virtually to update them on both the East Street Rehabilitation Project and the Greenway Rail Trail Project for the PVPC and MassDOT at this meeting. We do have one furnace boiler that isn't operating at the Town Hall. BG Mechanical has ordered the part for it, which may take a week to come in. In the meantime, we'll be operating on one furnace boiler rather than the two. And the website design with Final Site is proceeding on schedule. The team of Megan Gentile, Dan Breen, both the AdHoc Technology Committee, and Chris Fowles and myself are meeting with Final Site representatives on a weekly updating basis. Then upcoming, Select Board meetings, February 28th. Select Board meetings for March to be determined. And Town meeting, Tuesday, May 2nd, 7:00 p.m., Norris Elementary School.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions, Ben?
Questions? Should we plan on just every other week in March?
I think so. I think that makes sense. I think we're...
The 14th?
We'd probably end up with the same dates, I have a feeling, in March, right?
14th and 28th.
Yeah, it should be the 14th and the 28th.
Yeah, I think it is. All right. Everybody okay with that? March 14th and March 28th?
I just had a couple of questions. In terms of, it's great that Michelle Bennett will be able to cover for Jerry. I wish him a safe trip and return. I'm just wondering, is that just a vendor or contract? Or is this, has this happened before, where she's covered? Or is this...
This is the first time since I've been here.
She just submitted invoice and sort of a contractor?
Well, Jerry's paid on a stipend on the payroll basis, so it will become part of that.
Oh, okay. And then, just one other question on the Pioneer Valley Planning meeting. Are there any concerns at all about the TIP funding for either of those projects?
No, at this point in time, of course, the East Street Rehabilitation is a new project that's being submitted. And they were able to let us carry over the Greenway. So, now it's just updating those and getting the designs in over the next course of several years, so that they, and I think they were talking about fiscal year '27 for the funding for the two of them, so...
Do they release any funds for the design phase?
No, the design is basically on the town. The TIP is the construction itself.
Certainly, the money that we've been trying to raise for the Greenway has all been through the grant money. So, nothing yet in terms of East Street, right?
Well, we've been using Chapter 90 money for the East Street design.
So, there's been no additional grant money?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. How about some Select Board reports? Joy, do you have anything offhand?
Sure. The only committee that met was Conservation Commission last Monday. Not much to report. There was an incident with a dog attack on one of the trails. So, they are eager, the CONCOM is eager to put up signs in regards to leashing dogs. But we did have a discussion about making sure that matches the general bylaw that we just passed. So, that is a continuing discussion, I believe. And then, Housing Authority was unable to meet. They will be meeting February 27th in person. And then, Planning Board is meeting tomorrow over Zoom, and then Open Space doesn't meet until March. That's all.
All right. Thanks. Randy?
CPC hasn't met, but we've got an email from Virginia Ahart to set up a meeting, because there is at least one application for CPC funds prior to the annual Town meeting. I just want to mention that she also let the committee know that she will be stepping down as the Chair of CPC. And I just wanted to say, I'm sure we'll say it several times, she's synonymous with CPC. She has done a phenomenal job since the beginning of this program to advocate for community preservation accounts and knowledge and so forth. So, just wanted to say thank you very much to Virginia Ahart. And we'll be meeting in the next several weeks, I think. The Board of Assessors met last week, and they're in the process of hiring a consultant to work on cyclical inspections. We're also gathering data in terms of other towns' office staffing, rate of pay, et cetera. They're reviewing currently the abatements. The goal is to hire a full-time PA, or to have it be shared with another town, or as a contracted service. And they're also looking to recruit one additional Board of Assessor member. The next meeting's Tuesday, February 21st, at 10:00 in person in the Assessor's Office. Council on Aging met on the 1st of February. We have the letter of the retirement of Joan Linehan. The ARPA funding is, continue to look at outreach worker, fundraiser, and cultural trips. We're going to discuss the van driver, but there's been more limited vans service due to the resignation of one of the van drivers. They are also looking for board members for the COA. There are several programs that are available. It's a busy center, so please check the monthly newsletter. The next meeting is Wednesday, March 1st, at 4:00 via Zoom. The COA Building Committee and the Public Safety Building Committee met together on Zoom last, on the 9th. And it was with Abacus Architect and Planners. Both committees updated each other on the current status of their feasibility studies. The COA feasibility study continued to refine the evaluation of potential sites, and the goal is to identify one or two sites. They're also refining the actual building, design plans, and positioning on the sites. They're having a very important public meeting at Norris Cafeteria on Wednesday, March 1st, at 7:00, to present the plans and gather input from the public. It's not just for seniors, so please, everyone, come. We really want to spread the information about where the study's at and gather more information from residents. The next meeting, besides that, is February 23rd at noon via Zoom. And then, Ed gave the update about the Public Safety Building Committee, about the RFQ being back up on COMBIES. Their next meeting is Monday, the 27th of February, at 4:30 in person. I think that's it.
All right. Francine?
Okay. The Board of Health met last night. And in fulfilling the terms of our host-community agreement with a marijuana establishment, the town will provide substance abuse prevention education with funds from the local marijuana business that are designated for that purpose. As a Select Board liaison to the Board of Health, I requested that the Board of Health take a leadership role in establishing a Substance Abuse Prevention Education Committee composed of individuals with expertise in substance abuse prevention. The committee will draft a charge for Select Board approval that defines its objectives, its role, and methods in the provision of substance abuse prevention, education, and counseling to students and adults. The committee should include representatives from the school, the Board of Health, emergency responders, police, and other experts. I thought that the Board of Health membership interest and response to this initiative last night was terrific. I was pleased that everyone agreed to identify local experts as potential committee members and the resources which will be needed for that purpose. The plan is that they will go out and identify these individuals and come to the next meeting ready and prepared to discuss and select potential committee members. The Norris School, moving on, the Norris School met on February 8th. School enrollment is at 478. I need to report that the school recently conducted a practice lockdown. The majority of time was spent on the fiscal year '24 budget, and since it was not finalized, I'm not going to put any numbers out at this time. The principal presented a very thoughtful and necessary capital request to repair, replace, and maintain the facilities and equipment. It was demonstrated that the new neurodiversity program is not only meeting the student needs, but saving the town money. The Bylaw Committee will meet tomorrow to review the next to final, we hope, E360 recodified draft of the town bylaws that we've been working on for about 18 months, I hate to say, but for that amount of time. And if time permits, we want to continue with our plan to finalize three additional bylaw drafts. And with those drafts, just to let you know, that we plan to get them out, because two of the three are new bylaws. And in that, for that purpose, we plan to hold public meetings, which will be announced at a later date, so that we can have resident input in those new bylaws. And then, finally, the ZBA hasn't met, and I don't know of a scheduled meeting at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay. John?
Can I ask you a question, Francine? Francine, on the neurodiversity program, did the principal report that it's saving the town money? And is that based on data for the amount of money it's costing the program through ARPA relative to the out-of-district placement dollar amount?
I believe that was it.
No.
John? That's it?
No, that's the second piece. The piece that you're referring to is the 13 students that have stayed in district.
That are currently in district.
That were from the previous enrollment, what was it, the math bridges, or the language?
Okay.
So, they have the data on that to show that that investment that we did two years ago has retained either 13 or 14 children out of multiple of 30,000 apiece, have stayed at Norris instead of going out of district.
Okay. So, it's too early to determine the...
On the neurodiversity.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
But their feeling is, because I asked the question, if whether or not we have, the program has been open to out-of-district placements. And that decision, I guess, is yet to be made.
Correct.
So, the program is that successful?
I will say, we are far enough along where it is highly likely that a child from another elementary school within the district will be out-of-district placed into Norris versus going out to another school at 107. We would charge a slight less price to that abutting community for this neurodiversity program.
Thanks. Okay. John, go ahead.
The only committee that I have that met during the past two weeks was PPP, and it's all over our agenda on page two.
Yes, it is.
I'll wait for that.
You were busy, obviously, yeah. All right. Any questions of anybody before I...
So, just to be clear, there was a preliminary meeting of the Hampshire Regional School Committee where a budget was passed, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. They took a positive vote on the preliminary number.
Okay. But the Norris School preliminary budget was not accepted.
Correct. And we are meeting on the 27th of February, I believe. It's a Monday night.
And does anyone know when the next Hampshire Regional School Committee meeting is? I know there's a bunch of negotiation meetings, but the full meeting...
I think, because they took that vote, I don't think they're going to deal with the budget until their next full, which would be the first Monday.
First Monday of the month. Okay.
I think there's, after a look, a negotiation on the 21st, but there's also one on the...
Yeah, I saw two of them at 9:00 in the morning, but I haven't seen yet posted a regular...
There's one on the 22nd.
But that's the, there are two negotiation meetings. They're both at 9:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was looking for a regular... I was looking for a regular one.
Yeah, regular one, I think is not going to be till early March from what little.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And just briefly from me on the grant committee, no real news yet. We're still waiting to hear on a couple of the grants that were outstanding to see if we have anything, one on the Safe Roads to School Program in particular, and also the townwide culvert assessment study through the Clean Water Action Fund. We're still waiting to hear the results on those. And we should hear, I'm hoping, by the next meeting with a little bit of luck. The only thing that's out that we're, we've sent out a note to various town committees and departments is just to let people know about this One Stop for Economic Growth Grant that's out. I mentioned it, I think, last meeting briefly. This is the, you apply once and it goes to like 12 different agencies at state. Depending on the questions you answer, it gets routed automatically to the right agency. And a lot of this can be for some planning, some construction. But it's trying to be a more efficient program, I think, for municipalities to apply and get some, some funding. And so there is a request for expressions of interest that's out until the beginning or thereabouts of March, March 17th. So I've sent a note describing the program around to oh, various people. Let's see, Highway, Housing, the two, Senior Center Building Committee, the Public, Public Safety Building Committee, Highway, Park. I think those are the main ones that I sent a note to just to say, if you're interested, you know, let us know so that we can help from the grant committee point of view to put in the application. We've got to actually submit it in a online portal. So if people did their, their draft in a, in a Word format, it doesn't take a whole lot. There's a very short application expression of interest form. It's not terribly complicated. And we had tried this, the first year it came out in about 2021, we'd put in an expression of interest for three projects. One was exploring underutilized properties for public housing. We put in for the Public Safety Complex Feasibility Study and sort of a jumpstart on a mixed-use commercial development idea. And we got feedback on that, but the feedback was kind of lukewarm. So it wasn't encouraging enough for us to move on with any full application, which would be a big process. But the point of this expression of interest is to get feedback from the state to let you know, yeah, you've got some good ideas. You need to strengthen this and this and this in your argument in order to be really competitive with what else is out there. The one change, and I know it may be too early in a sense for this round, but the one change is this year, they are allowing funds for public safety and just municipal buildings, which had not been the case two years ago. So that is a little bit more of an open door than what had been there before. So I would just encourage people to take a look at that if you've got some ideas. You know, Grant Committee is meeting on, let's see, Thursday. But we'll be meeting again in a couple of weeks. And if we need to put in some expressions of interest, we can easily do that. So I would just like us to encourage, encourage people to take advantage of that idea. At least we can get some feedback and see if we have an idea that makes any sense to the state. Okay? Nothing else on that point of view. So let's move on to appointments and resignations. So we have, let's take the first one here. So let's take the C O A. You want to do Joan's, Brene?
Yeah, let me just bring it back up.
Oh, thank you. So just retiring.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, Joan Lenihan will be retiring. It'll be on the end of June. And do you want me to read the whole thing?
Not necessarily. I mean, you can just, whatever you'd like to do.
Okay. So I don't think we've read this efficiently yet, have we?
We have not, no. I think that came in right as we were.
Okay.
Maybe last time.
Yep. So as of June 29, 2023, she is saying that she's going to retire with municipal pension. She'll be celebrating her 65th birthday in May. So hence she'll be eligible for retirement benefits. She, she spent the first 15 years were in the private sector as an activity director for a local nursing home. And then the last 25 years involved AGWAM and Southampton Council on Aging. So she said, I could not have imagined the journey I would take, the great people I would meet, and the work and events that would be accomplished. It's time for me to let another individual take the reins and hopefully see the success of a future new senior center. It's been my pleasure being the Southampton Council on Aging Director for the past five and a half years. And I know I have made a positive imprint on the Southampton C O A and its seniors. At the public event that we had, there were many, many comments by residents about Joan. So she'll treasure her memories and friendships and hopefully will be able to enjoy many years of retirement. Thank you, my C O A board members, C O A staff, past and present, who have supported the important work of the Council on Aging in providing needed services to our older population. Sincerely, Joan Lenihan. So thank you very much, Joan.
So can we have a motion to accept the resignation, I guess, or retirement, resignation?
So I'll move to accept the resignation of Joan Lenihan, C O A Director.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no opposed, that's accepted. So we wish Joan great fun in retirement. We know that she'll be busy. She's never one to sit still, so.
That's for sure.
Best of luck. Next one we have is resignation for the Assistant Treasurer Collector, Kristi Facto.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Kristi Facto.
All right. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That is also accepted. And Kristi's last day was the 9th, I believe you said already, right? So she has actually departed a few days ago. So we wish her well in, in her new endeavors, wherever she's going to land. And appreciate her work here since, I think about 2017, from what I saw in the paperwork, anyway. So she worked here in a couple of different positions over, over her time here, so.
Chris, can I ask that we go out of order and take up the two P R Fs remaining related to the Treasurer Collector's office?
Yeah, I think that would be a great idea. Since, we'll do that while Jen's.
And there's some for Lucy, too. There's some for the Town Clerk office, too.
Yes. This one for who? For you two? Which one do you have? Oh, you've got the.
Election workers.
The election workers one? Oh, okay. All right. Can we do that one first? Would you mind? How about if we put in the election workers one?
Whatever's wanted to do as long as we move along.
All right. Let's pick up the election workers one. Who would like to go over that one?
There's a, I move to accept the P C R F, the P C F that was previously approved last night by the P P B Board, subject to conditions, and conditions being that an attachment of the scheduled impacted employees be attached to the form so that a duplicate copy of this document could be placed into each and every one's file in compliance with the auditor's request. This is moving minimum wage from 14, 25 to $15 an hour.
Okay. So that's a motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? I just have a question.
Go ahead. I actually am trying to find my electronic copy because I had a question.
It was, yeah, it's in here somewhere.
That's the second page was only a late file.
This is the only one?
The second page of that filing that lists the, all the employees.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but in my electronic file, I made some notes, so I wanted to just get to that.
Now, I guess I was thinking that we had appointed several people already through June, if not longer.
I understand this list and the town clerk would come up, but this list is supposed to represent those that are actively appointed whose terms have not expired.
Okay. That would continue on.
Well, either until the end of their term and she appoints a new list or whatever their process is.
But we don't, what is the end date of this new bunch? Do we know?
Isn't it, is it an annual process?
Yes, I believe it's August.
Okay. I was thinking that we had appointed some not that long ago that was maybe, okay.
Go ahead.
Just have a couple of questions. On the top here, Cory Check, is that a yes or a no? No. And then effective date?
Be the first election.
Microphone.
Well, the effective date is January 1st, when minimum wage changed to $15 an hour.
But no, to clarify, there have been no, you haven't used any of these employees since January 1st.
Right.
Retro.
Yeah. So it's, nothing is retro because they haven't been, they have not.
What about the special town meeting?
That was in December.
Oh, right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So this would cover the town elections in May?
Correct.
And then right on through elections in, any other elections? Do we have elections in?
No, just, yep. And then I have requested in my fiscal year 2024 budget to reflect the increases. Yep.
Okay. So another question, it says to follow state guidelines.
Yeah, because the state has raised minimum wage.
Okay, so just to be clear, the municipality has the right to not go up on the minimum wage? So I would say based on town meeting vote or select vote approval or whatever, because it wasn't really based on the state guidelines. Because.
If you want to refuse it, you can, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to be more accurate about it. It's not, the going up to the minimum wage was based on.
Our decision was our choice here, I think, yeah.
Select board choice. Because we're not required to go to the statement.
Yeah, so the wording is not, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it says regarding minimum wage for any election worker employed or to be employed.
Correct.
Okay.
So any new election workers going forward?
So you all fill out one of these for anybody that's hired or no?
Yes, she would have to fill out.
Yeah, you have to fill out. So it's not going to, just, this is a blanket for all current and future.
Right.
You would still fill out one of these for all?
Well, I mean, if it's a newer employee with a different name, yeah.
The list, the list of what's on here, though, they don't.
Will change.
Before us, right?
Right.
Unless they drop.
I would hope not, yeah.
Is there any new ones to this list?
I just want to make sure we're consistent, too, because what I was understanding was that when the fire department had a large number of employees that went up to the minimum wage, they're required to fill out a separate one for every single one of these. So I'm fine with it if P Q B's fine with it. I'm just saying that I just want to make sure that we're consistent with what we tell department heads.
Right. Moving forward, yes, if it's a newer employee, yes. But if it's someone that's already active, then I would not fill out a, a new, yeah.
Well, the fire department had, did not have new employees. They were people that were.
Can we ask Jen?
They did turn blanket, yes, P C F for increase.
Correct. To be, to be clear, to be clear, the fire department attempted to do exactly what the town clerk's doing with the first page without the second page being attached. And that's when the outside auditor said, you really should do it this way. So we modified and said, okay, you can still do the blanket, but you've got to give us the list underneath. Because when it hits the treasurer's office, they've got to break it out into each individual file.
And who it pertains to, right? Otherwise, you won't really know, right?
Correct. It's the second list, yep.
Okay.
Okay. And then it says salary or hourly, it's now, it's supposed to say the actual hourly rate, right? Instead of just say hourly?
On the, on the signing sheet, it now says $15 an hour.
Yeah.
On what's?
On this, right here.
And the one that will be signed.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. That was one of the questions I had. And I had one other question. Does it have to say something about not more than 20 hours a week? Or 19 hours a week?
I'm not sure. They're not, they would never do any, they don't work 20, they don't, they only work on call. So, I mean, as, on as-needed basis, and I think I put that on there as needed, so.
But usually, just to be clear, we usually say not more than 19 hours a week.
Okay.
Just because of, because we got into trouble in the past when we had some people who were working a lot one week and not very much the next week. And it averaged out to be over 19 hours a week. So I'm just trying to be consistent with what we've had in the past. So, so long as it's agreed that that would not trip into a benefited situation.
There would never be a benefited election worker, so.
Right. Right. But I still think we should be consistent with what we've asked other departments to do.
Okay.
And say not to exceed 19 hours a week.
We can make that handwritten change or something.
So, um, so with like the piece, well, I'm not going to go into another department, but with the van driver for the C O A, 19-plus hours, what, what would the P C F be? Would that be a benefit? How, how does that work? Is that consistent with?
We'll get to that. Ask our P Q B member here.
Different situation, we'll get to it.
That's a different situation, okay. All right.
All right. So we'll make the, a little handwritten note on here. $15 per hour, minimum wage, right? For the people whose names are attached, right? Okay? All right. I think we had a motion and a second?
Yes.
Can I, can I just ask? And so the $15 would be for anyone moving forward as well as that is chosen as an election or hired as an election worker as well?
Any new person that is not on this list.
Right, yes.
My understanding would be would.
Sorry, I didn't, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
But you'd still have to.
Yes.
Put it in paperwork for it.
Yes.
If they're not on the list, but yeah.
Correct.
Right. Okay. So then all these would go until the following August? August of 20?
This August.
This August. August 23. I'm in the wrong year, never mind. August 23 is when these would all expire, is that right?
If not, if not reappointed. If they're reappointed for another term, that sheet would follow them.
Yeah.
But if you put new people in, the new people would have to have a P C F that would state $15.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Correct.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We got it.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So now let's jump back to John's request. Yes, John?
Yeah. And if we could take them up separately?
Yeah, let's do that.
Because depending on the action on one dictates the terms on the second one.
Sure.
So first, we could take up the Assistant Treasurer Collector, P R F, and ask the department head to come forward. We had a lengthy conversation at P P P about this. And of course, I don't, I turned my originals in. So my handwritten notes are on the original in the bottom section, subject to, and I believe we changed it to an interim. Do you have the originals?
I don't. Ed may have them.
This was in the packet, right? The electronic backup?
Yeah, we have the.
You have the.
We don't have anything from whatever.
The, the P C Fs.
Right, right, right. But the original one is in the.
Yes. So we have.
What was in the packet was prior to the meeting last night.
Okay. Okay. So, you, somebody want to take us through, so we want to deal with the.
There are, for each position, there is a PRF and a PCF, and I'd like to address the PCF first, for the assistant treasurer.
Assistant treasurer-collector.
Correct.
Okay, so Jen, go ahead with that explanation, I guess.
Yep, so I'd just say, the PPP voted to approve what was submitted to us, but we made the following changes, we made it an interim slash acting assistant treasurer-collector in accordance with the rules and regulations of the PPP manual.
Okay. All right, Jen, yeah, go ahead, explain what's going on.
So, the PCF for the assistant treasurer-collector is to hire my current clerk as my new assistant, so it would be interim acting, so this way we could, we would still post the assistant position, but she would be able to start in the actual position as of Wednesday. I asked for her start-in rate to be twenty-one dollars per hour, based on what I have extra in my budget and her experience with other municipalities as far as my department goes. And you should have her resume attached somewheres, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but.
Jen, if you could talk to why, why we settled on interim acting versus a temporary appointment?
Oh, because we, because interim acting, she's being basically appointed into a higher position within my department, but she won't lose any benefits, whereas a temporary position is not benefited, so she wouldn't be able to keep her vacation time sick personal, only any benefit that was given under chapter thirty-two B, like health insurance, so that's why we set it on interim acting, it made more sense for the situation.
She gets to keep her leave days, is that what I understand?
Right, mhm, it won't affect that status.
And the pay scale for this position is eighteen sixty-five to thirty-eighty-three?
Yes. So that's on the scale that was created for the last budget season, so, I, I mean, honestly, when I, when I myself, you know, add up her experience off of her resume, and if, if I put her on that wage scale based off years of experience, I have her, like, at a step ten, that's, but I believe step ten on that is like twenty-five dollars an hour, you know, I know that's not in my budget, so I went, I did twenty-one, because that's what I have available right now, but you know, obviously, do you have a question?
No, I have questions after you finish.
Okay.
Can I just ask, what is the, the length of time extended for the interim acting, is there, and they?
There's not a specific length of time, so I'm gonna post the position of assistant treasurer-collector, see what, you know, we get in for resumes, for, it has to be posted for two weeks, you know, so we'll post it and go from there. I mean, I don't want to keep it too long, because I can't really post the admin position until, you know.
That one's empty.
So there's a permanent person in the assistant position, because I don't want to leave, like, leave her with no, you know, position to go to.
Understood.
Yeah.
So if you, if you put this person in the interim acting, she would also be eligible to apply for the, to really actually.
Right, for the permanent position, yes, yes.
If you read the section of the PPP book, it says that upon request of the department head, PPP and select board can go with this single appointment, but you need to demonstrate that you've done a good faith effort to fill the position without a single source candidate, so that's where we went with, you can do an interim, it's not right for the employee to lose their benefits for the few weeks they step up to cover, plus it guarantees them their job back if, if they, because otherwise, why you would sympathize, step up and do more, and two, allows for the posting, if fourteen applications come in, then that person's one of fourteen, and score them all, and we'll see what it is, and then they're, they're free to apply for it.
Right, okay, and per PQB, is, is this because you're moving into a new, a new position, albeit within the same department, is that person now under a new probationary period in the new job?
So I would say if they were hired into the permanent position, yes, but not for the interim.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I remember reading something from the PQB manual in the packet here, it's basically the PQB may remand the PRF and/or the job description if in its opinion the document, so are you requesting some change in what's currently a procedure in hiring somebody?
No.
Because it sounds like if it's within the PQB manual to go with an interim, and you're posting the position.
Right.
Is there?
Well, I think, I mean, originally, I was going to try to just promote her without posting, because it does say in the policy that you can promote without posting if you only have one person in that department that would apply for that position, so you don't have to do an external or internal posting, but I decided that this, you know, last night, we kind of decided that this would be a better route, so.
Yeah, it's basically because of the last sentence in section B one A on page seventeen of the manual, "A promotion under this provision shall be permitted only in circumstances in which PPP and the BOs are convinced it would be in the best interest of the town in a decision not to use promotion, the fill of vacancy should not be deemed in any way as a reflection negatively on the employee, and at least as far as PPP was concerned, we're not convinced it's in the best interest, because we haven't gotten a market yet, but we see no reason to permit this person to step forward and help, and give them the protections of, you're not gonna lose your job if you do this, hence the interim."
Right, 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 well, I'm glad to hear that, because I do, that was what my concern was, to be honest with you, I think it should be posted, I think that the position does say associate's degree preferred, there's a number of things in terms of term amount of time in past positions that should be considered, so I, I'm very happy that you're at least casting out a net to see.
Yeah.
And I think that, I totally agree with that, I mean, I think my, my reservation when I first saw this was more just the notion of an internal promotion when we haven't had somebody in the position for at least a full year.
Yeah.
And having had a performance evaluation.
Right, mhm.
So that was, that would have been my, my, you know, stopping point altogether.
Right, yeah.
So I think the idea of, of putting in some other, other way to get the position filled, to get the job done, but have that person still have some protection and not lose, lose benefits, makes, makes a whole lot of sense.
Yeah.
I just have one question, on the job description, I just want to be clear, on the front page, the position vacancy, it says assistant ta, sorry, assistant treasurer slash collector, but in the footer, all the way along, it says assistant to the treasurer-collector, so is that the same thing? Don't we have?
I mean, I guess it is the same thing, yeah, I'm not sure why the footer.
Yeah, the footer.
I didn't actually create that job description, so.
Assistant treasurer-collector.
Yeah. Yeah, it is, yeah.
Office in your absence, or in your delic.
It is assistant treasurer-collector.
Right, so somebody should be able to act or be, you know.
Right.
Be there when you're not there, kind of thing.
Yes.
Just to note that that's something that should be.
Yeah, I'll look it up.
At some point in time here.
Okay.
I think would be good. All right, so we've, once again, gone around with some discussion here, I don't think I had a motion on the floor.
I, I motioned to approve the PCF.
I'll second it.
Do we have a second? All right.
I'll second.
All right, got a second, I think we needed it first, Francine, so that's fine.
Oh, sorry.
And we'll come back to you, though, any further discussion before we lose track of all that, is there anything? Ed, yeah?
Just one reminder to the board, and that step scale that the select board approved back in May.
Yep.
Is supposed to be steps or experience in a like position, and not just general municipal experience, you know, so, I mean, I, I looked at this, and I would say that this individual might have step three or step four experience that's actually pertinent in a like position, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, if you went down and actually counted, I mean, I really do appreciate the resume, I think the, you know, we have a good feeling for what this person has done from working a variety of towns.
Yeah, I mean.
In Westfield, and East Hampton, and here.
Yeah, and most of it is pertinent to my office.
I guess we're thinking of it, or I'm thinking of it anyway, from the tax collector point, and not so much the HR kind of role.
I mean, but right, yeah.
A lot of that is what she had fulfilled, human resource specialist, and.
But right now, we do a lot of HR activities, because we don't have an HR department, so it really, it lays in the treasurer's hands, you know.
So, I mean, I think we could, you know, we could probably gobble over how many actual years we would agree would match exactly.
Right, right.
What the job requirements are that you have for this person.
Right.
And so I guess that was just a further question that I had, so the, going from where this person is now as your admin clerk, right, at something like seventeen or eighteen, or whatever that was.
Yeah, I believe seventeen sixty-four, right, I don't have it.
So you're proposing twenty-one, which would put it at step five, the way I see this.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Twenty, twenty ninety, twenty dollars and ninety-nine cents, essentially.
Did PQB have a recommendation on that, or is that only where it is because of interim?
No, we, we did discuss that, going from looking at the expiring and going up, and then, again, from PPP's point of view, it's within the grade and the step range that's permitted, the town accountant has said there's available funds to pay it, and the department head represented that she believed that a step five was warranted based on her interpretation of the jo, of the resume of the applicant, it's, it's the same standard we apply to the highway department and the police department, when, when they've deviated in the past few months. I did tell the department head that, select board might have a different view of it, but they, they have a broader scope and lens when they're looking at this, but he didn't take objection to it.
Okay, well, this resume doesn't include work in Southampton.
It actually doesn't include work in Southampton, so that would be a whole, yeah, that would be more time, like, added in right there.
Yeah, but.
But her prior experience in Southampton, I wouldn't include, she was in the town clerk's office, and, you know, it helps to have, I guess, an understanding of municipal, but that doesn't really apply to my office, so I wouldn't.
But still, when you look at it, it's, you know, less than one, less than one, less than one, one, seven, one, one, I mean, I think that's a consideration, too.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, she was in this, at the city of Westfield for three years, was it? I'm so blind, let's see.
Well, it says to present, so we don't know.
No, down below, from two thousand and ten.
There was a seven.
Two thousand and ten.
Oh, so it was seven, two thou, it was two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two, July of two thousand and twenty-two, when she started with us, so there, she, you know, did payroll, she did personnel, so that's three years of, you know, doing duties of pretty much all those duties we do in my office, right there. Also, she worked as the department of the public works office manager for the city of Westfield from two thousand and ten to two thousand and seventeen, and a huge part of what we do is utility billing, and, you know, she was able to go into my office, and she, she like knows so much about that software from doing it there that she pulled reports, honestly, that I didn't even know, like, existed, you know, she's really good at that, and that, I mean, that right there is, that's like seven years as office manager there, between that and being the clerk in the collector's office, which is, again, you know, what we do, so I feel like, I feel like all of these duties do pertain directly to our office.
Well, I think there are transferable skills, for sure, but I think if the payroll discussion like Ed mentioned was based on a certain premise, then it doesn't necessarily meet it, and my concern was just the, the number of positions that are a year or less.
Yeah.
So that's just something that you'll just have to evaluate when it comes to that point.
Yeah.
So, is the idea, though, that if, if we establish this position for the interim acting at twenty-one, is that going to be the, the entry point for somebody permanent coming in?
I mean, I guess, it could be, depending on what, you know, depending on who applies and what their qualifications are, and what's in my budget, really, and then, I don't know when the compensation plan from the Collins Center is going to be completed, but I know, like, I think you had mentioned that it would really be based mostly, like, if, like, it would be before that, but then, any future will be off of that plan, any future, like, fiscal year twenty-four wages.
But don't we, don't we normally bring in somebody at the lower end of, the, the lower end of the scale? We don't usually, have we made exceptions? I mean, a couple of these I know we have for the police, where they've said, and through the union, it's been, yeah, with the experience, whatever, you can hire them at a higher level rather than step one or step two, but don't we usually?
The same with the highway.
Depends on two things. One is really the person's experience, and if, for example, you had an assistant treasurer-collector from another town come over that's got six or seven years' experience, if you can, you'd probably want to put them there, but the other piece of that puzzle is, what are your budgetary constraints?
Sure.
Yep, so those are the two pieces, but it's, it's, the system is designed so that, okay, if the person has no experience in that particular, in that exact job, they come in step one, if they have one year, it's, okay, step two, two years, step three, three years, step four, and so, and so forth, but, like I say, it's in that particular job, not in a different job.
Okay, I did, I just want to mention that the previous individual's sal, hourly rate was twenty dollars and fifty cents. Same grade level, both grade nine, grade nine for the previous and grade nine for the, for the in.
Right, so the previous treasurer-collector that was in the, or assistant treasurer-collector didn't have the experience of this person, so she's been in the position doing the payroll for two years, but prior to being an employee of the town of Southampton, had no office, no municipal experience, so she didn't, she doesn't have the same background as this new person.
She started with town back in two thousand and seventeen, according to this list.
And she did, and she was in the clerk position for three or four of those years, I believe, four, so, although, that clerk position doesn't really have any, like, payroll experience, payroll knowledge, so that's why she wouldn't be as, you know, in a, she wouldn't have a higher rate. I mean, Angela has a lot of payroll knowledge, a lot of experience, I mean, she's.
So I, I haven't, I know, you know, as the clock ticks away, I know there's a motion made and seconded, I haven't heard anybody ask for an amendment to change the wage, so if, if there isn't one, can, could we call the vote?
Yeah, no, I think we're just trying to clarify what it was, yep, anybody have any further questions? Joy, anything? No, no, all right, then I will call for the vote, we have a motion and a second on the floor for an interim acting treasurer-collector assistant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay, good.
Thank you.
With that one passing, the next one up in order is the PRF for the assistant treasurer-collector, so that we can post the job, the only change to the supporting documents from the last time is the updated pay scale from eighteen sixty-five to thirty point eight-three, which, which is equivalent to the pay scale that we approved as part of the last budget as a holder, until Collins can do the review.
Right, I myself have been thinking about that and wondering if I should take out the pay range, just because it is only a holder, it's gonna change, and I feel like to hire someone a certain scale, and then the Collins Center has a new scale, would be kind of, you know, what do you think?
I don't think the Collins is gonna give you a pay scale in the next three weeks.
It's not gonna get ready in time for you.
Oh, no, I know, but I just feel like, if it changes mid-year, like, I don't want it to.
I think the stress there is based on experience.
Right.
In the job.
Yeah.
So that somebody with no experience doesn't think they can negotiate thirty dollars an hour.
Right.
Yeah, so somebody with no experience coming in, or step one, would be the eighteen sixty-five, right?
Correct.
There it goes, yep, and I think just, just two things, so, one, I already mentioned, so in the footer of this, before it gets posted.
Yeah.
Change that.
Okay.
You know, assistant.
Right, assistant, too, yeah.
On the first page, I guess, maybe it's okay, as I read it here, it said, in the bulk of the, sort of that third paragraph with the requirements, it said, associates' degree, accounting, business admin, or related field, plus at least one year of experience in payroll accounting, and then later on in the actual document, I thought it said three to five years related work experience, so I just would ask that you just double-check to make sure.
Just look at that, okay.
We're saying the same thing.
Right, okay, yeah.
I'm not gonna make an appointment of, you know, which is right or wrong, but it, when I read it, it felt inconsistent, so.
Okay.
If you just take a look at that.
Sure.
Okay, all right, so we have a PRF, any other questions about that? If not, I think, John, did you just make a motion to approve the PRF? Could I have a second?
Second.
All right, you have no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third up, as a domino effect on that, is a PCF for Robin Richards to be appointed as the temporary non-benefited eligible admin clerk in the treasurer's office at a rate of nineteen sixty-four per hour, which is equal to her current rate at the highway department, total hours not to exceed forty hours in a week.
So basically, she can only work for my department ten to fifteen hours a week, because she works for highway and transfer, combined twenty-five, and works for water up to five hours, sometimes she doesn't, you know, sometimes she doesn't even work, sometimes she works five hours, sometimes two, so it really depends, and it's just something that we have to make sure she never gets overtime.
And that's a twelve-week temporary appointment while the other person is stepping up to the interim position.
Understood, now, what do we have in our package, we've got, oh, temporary, okay, but you said, what was the hourly rate? I've got nineteen twenty-five here.
Yeah, it was amended at the PPP to nineteen sixty-four.
Yeah, sorry, that was an error of mine, that I put nineteen twenty-five.
Which is her highway rate.
Right.
That's her current salary, okay. All right, so I think we have a motion on the floor from John, yes, John, did you make that motion?
I'll second it.
All right, you have a motion and a second? Reenie made the second, any further comments, questions about this?
No, just want to say thank you to Robin for, once again, stepping up and helping.
No, we are so lucky that we have her to be able to step up every, you know, it's really helpful.
All right, and that's, that can be effective pretty much immediately, right?
It's effective tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll let her know.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Now, the last domino is a PRF for the administrative treasurer's collectors post in the event that it becomes vacant through this process, so that the job description and summary can be moved along to finance committee, so if need be, it'll be executed and ready to go, again, the only change from the previous time is to reflect the current scale that's in place.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
All right, and some discussion for a minute, any? So we have an hourly range potential from seventeen twenty-nine, twenty-five, ninety-seven, so this would be a grade two, the way I.
Correct.
See this, right? So what's up top on these, this page here does not reflect the scale, John, is that right?
Well, it says, I mean, the full scale is fifteen seventy-one to twenty-five ninety-seven.
Yeah.
The expiring is seventeen sixty-four.
Right, so the, the first level's, yeah, the first step level is fifteen seventy-one.
Right.
Current person is at seventeen twenty-nine, so I think we just have to be, if you're gonna put that in the advertisement, we just need to clear.
Yeah, we should just amend that to fifteen seventy-one.
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Step one is fifteen seventy-one.
Okay, all right.
And it's actually promoted to a interim assistant, on the copy I had, it says promoted to assistant.
That's different.
Okay.
Different thing, right? This is-
Oh, so I put that just because that position would have become vacant, yeah, if she was promoted to assistant, yeah, so you're right, we can change it to interim.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But really, it won't, yeah. No, go ahead.
So I think we have a motion, and we had a second. John and Reenie, Bud Lee?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and hearing no opposed, that passes as well. All right.
All right.
Good.
That's it.
Now, here's the originals. For your signature.
All right, well, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jen. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jen.
All righty. Then we'll just put these right here for now. All right. Let us catch up to where we are here.
Do you want to keep going out of order?
Um, we could do a few of these PCS. I see our police chief is here, so we could do a couple of these while we're at it.
Yeah, but he's in here for the long run.
He's in here for the long run?
For executive session.
Okay. Okay. So you don't mind hanging out and just, okay, all right, well, we'll just keep going on our regular business then. All right. So let's jump back then to our other-
I'll make a motion to approve the short-term disability application.
Okay. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second for discussion.
All right.
I just, as often is the issue, I have difficulty reading doctors' handwriting.
We all do.
Am I interpreting this?
I can read it, but I think we agree not to.
Yeah, I don't want to read it. I'm just saying, this is a short-term disability which is anticipated to, to be for the year and then reassessed. Is that the bottom line?
Well, the short-term disability is only for 26 weeks.
Okay.
So this is- But yes, you're reading that correctly.
All right, okay. I'm good.
All right. Okay. If no further questions?
Who seconded that?
I did for discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was, Reenie made the motion and John seconded. All right? All right. If no further questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, that is approved. All right, thank you. Let's touch base a little bit on, um, just the idea of the process, recruitment process to replace our retiring COA director. We've kind of tackled the ideas for the fire chief's retirement, and, um, so we wanted to see what some initial thoughts were here, and I don't know, I haven't heard from the COA board or anybody about their thinking, and I don't know if we wanted to wait until they had meeting with it, Reenie, as a liaison, or if you had some-
They're not actually, um, correction on the next date of the COA meeting, it's on the eighth, because the first is that public forum.
All right.
So that's, you know, that's going to push it ahead some.
Yeah.
I think you can certainly, I would imagine, the COA would have a recommendation of, I mean, similar to the, you know, fire chief, I think we talked about having a select board member and, um, town administrator, probably someone from the board, and some people from the public.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, either we wait until the eighth, or we try to pull that together.
Well, what might be helpful? Do we need, Ed, for these kind of recruitment processes, do we need a charge, per se? I guess we sort of do, don't we?
If you're going to use a search committee for it as a preliminary board, we should. But I can, I'm going to reach out to the STAM membership for, to see if anybody's done a search committee for a fire, fire chief, and I can do the same thing for a COA director. And just see if anybody's got some samples that they have used for a charge for those search committees.
So maybe if we could have that for the 28th, that would be in time for their next meeting. Sure. Just to see that, because I think we want to, you know, I, I'm, I'm the one that kind of talked to Joan a little bit earlier, just saying, you know, we're not rushing you out of here by any means, but the sooner we know officially that you are retiring at the end of the year, we would, that allows us to actually start, wheels in motion to look for replacement, knowing how difficult it's been to recruit people, in general. So, okay. So let's, let's do that. Ed, you'll reach out to get, um, some possible screening approaches or recruiting approaches on both fire chief and COA director, and get those back to us maybe for the next meeting. All right? Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, let's jump back onto the Select Board Annual Policy Review, and I really thank people for jumping up here. Now, what, what you have, if it's not clear, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, we've had two that have already been posted for 10 days, so we need to actually take a motion to approve those now that they've cleared their 10 days, is that right?
Correct.
All right.
Motion to approve hearings before the Select Board, approved date 22nd, 2017, or updated.
Yeah, updated. We'll have to put the new dates in.
Yep. And meal reimbursement policy, updated as well, as a package.
I'll second it. All right. Any discussion? All right. If not-
I assume there are no changes.
Yeah, I don't believe there were any comments. They were posted for a good 10 days, both on the website and in front of the town clerk's office, as required. So, no discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Those two are approved. And then we have before us tonight, oh, no, it's before tonight, we have the ones that we talked about last week, uh, that are now posted also on the town clerk's bulletin board and on our website. That's the buy recycled, the driveway regulations, the highway public way permit form, and the highway curb permit, cut, la curb cut permit, and the emergency weather one. So those are posted for 10 days, too, and those will clear certainly by our next meeting.
Yes.
Uh, and hopefully, we can not have any changes and move on those as well. So for tonight, we have the list that's right in front of us, um, with one exception, the highway fee schedule is not in our package tonight. That has not been finalized yet with the highway superintendent. So we'll start with alcohol policy. Joy, I think that was yours.
Yes.
Could you just point out, um, what you have for any thoughts and changes there, if anything?
Um, none.
None?
I checked in with the police department, and they were fine with the, the policy as is, and I checked the park commission, um, their liquor, the, the rule for liquor in the, in the park is, um, everyone has to be out before dusk, so it doesn't really apply. So I think it was fine as is.
Okay.
Unless the board has suggestions.
All right. Does anybody else have any thoughts or comments on that?
I do.
Yeah, John?
So the, um, I like the briefness of it, but all tables and bars must be cleared of all glasses, bowls, and containers of alcohol beverages, and all customers must be off premises within 30 minutes after closing time, the hour listed on the alcohol license. So my, my, where I see that going afoul is if you're licensed to be open till 1:00 a.m., but you make the decision to close to the public at 10:30 at night, I would then interpret that, that by 11 o'clock, everything should be cleared. You know, otherwise, in theory, you're having a private party for god knows who and employees up until one, technically till 1:30 in the morning.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if you're closed, you're closed, so 30 minutes after closing and/or the time listed on your license. Right? Because I think most, like, all-purpose licenses run till either 1:00 or 2:00 a.m. in the morning.
So rather than-
That's more accurate.
Rather than keeping that in parentheses, put an and/or in there? After closing time?
30 minutes after closing, and, but in the event you close before your license is, I don't know how to word it. I'm just saying.
Within 30 minutes after closing time?
And/or the 30 minutes after the hour listed on your liquor license. Or alcohol license.
What do you think, Joy? Any thoughts?
No, I don't have an opinion on that either way.
Uh, anybody else? So within 30 minutes after closing, the suggestion, within 30 minutes after closing time and/or the 30 minutes after the hour listed on the alcohol license.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Does that sound confusing, though?
Sorry?
Is that, is that confusing?
It could be, I mean, we could break it into two sentences, after, 30 minutes after closing time.
Or 30 minutes after the hour listed on your alcohol license, whichever comes first. I get it.
I just don't see, I don't see why restaurants would be, or people that have alcohol license would be closing. I mean, they're losing money.
They do. There isn't a single alcohol establishment in town that is open till 1:00 a.m. But they close to the public before midnight.
Mm-hmm.
Potentially could continue, technically, they could continue to serve private parties until-
Private parties, yes.
Yeah.
Well-
And if, and maybe that's okay.
What does that mean? Yeah.
What about not to exceed-
So do you want to specify after closing, um, time for the public? Do you want to specify?
Yeah, I, then, if you're just, if you want to, I would just add the or. Get rid of the parentheses, add the or.
Just forget the parentheses and maybe add, you know, 30 minutes after closing time for the public?
Or-
Not the public, no.
Yeah.
Not the public?
Yeah, just after closing time or the hour listed on the alcohol license.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, just add or.
And/or.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I like easy laws.
Okay. So with that change, we'll have Joy make that change, if everybody's in agreement.
Are we going to do these separately?
Yeah, let's do that.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the alcohol hours with that edit.
All right.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next one, I think we have is, um-
Dog hearings?
Procedures for conducting dog hearings. That was Francine.
We don't have a highway fee schedule, right?
Okay, what you see is I've, the changes are in bold and italicized, and the deletions, the original language that was in this policy before is, appears here, but only with strike through, so you can, you can see exactly how it was changed. What we did do is change it so that, um, the details of this conform with the new, um, dog bylaw that was passed, so that we're consistent in what it is that we're saying. And, um, I believe that's, was accomplished by this, but there can be edits and suggestions and so forth. So I'm open.
So just to be clear, everything that's strike through is out of there-
Eliminated, right.
And everything that's in bold-
Right.
Or underlined, that is not stricken through, is what's accepted, right?
Right.
Okay. It'll be easier to read, I'm sure, once it's-
Once it's cleaned up. But then, but then people wouldn't know how, what the changes were.
Right, what it was changed, right. Right, right.
No, I think you did a great job.
Yeah, no, this is fun.
I'll make a motion to approve the procedures for dog hearings.
Okay.
Second.
John seconded. Any discussion? I, I like the last-
Yes.
Thing myself, unless requested by the Select Board, the dogs shall not attend the hearing. I think that's- We got it. I like that.
Well, yes. There may be a personal appearance requirement.
It could be.
Okay.
All right. If no comments or discussion, could we have a vote on that, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with those changes, Francine, you'll clean that up and get that to Ed?
Yes.
And if, on any of these, the sooner you get it to Ed, the quicker we get them posted, so you don't have to wait till next meeting, just try and-
I'll get it cleaned up.
Keep them moving. Special municipal employee designation, I think that was Joy as well?
Yes. And I didn't have any changes to it, but I did see your email in regards to questions.
Right.
Yeah, you missed, one of the, board of selectmen should be Select Board, which is the second line.
Yep.
And then I think there's one committee that's missing, which is open space.
I was going to say, we probably should go back through, because I think there's been a few, either committees or positions that have been-
I think the rest of them are ad hoc.
Yeah.
I don't think we'd consider those, or include those, would we?
The ad hoc committees? That was a question I had, I didn't know what that was.
Yeah, we have two ad hoc building committees, plus we have the grants, and we have the technology.
Technology and cost efficiencies. We've got three ad hocks plus these two, um, building ones.
I'll have Judy go back through and check the-
Because we've got, no-
The agendas, to see if there were any others that might have been added.
Because public safety's not on here, either public safety building-
Yeah, that's ad hoc. Well, actually- Good question.
No, that one is a-
That was-
Are we going to update this, sorry, Joy?
Yeah.
Are we going to update this policy every single time we create an ad hoc? Or shouldn't there be a sentence in there that says-
Yeah, I was going to say-
In any future ad hoc or committee duly established by the board?
The board is supposed to actually vote, and the town clerk is supposed to keep a record of all, uh-
On an ongoing, not in an annual?
Physicians, yes.
All right. Okay.
Yeah, I was just thinking, because we just talked about this substance abuse prevention committee, ad hoc committee.
Yeah. Well, we know open space as a permanent committee is not on here, that's for sure.
Yep.
So you're going to check about the ad hoc, if that's relevant?
I'm going to, yeah, go back and see what has been added over the last couple of years.
What I mean, are you, were you going to check to see whether it's relevant to add ad hoc committees?
I can, I can do that as a second path, yes.
Yeah. Because if so, I mean, we have, obviously, we've got Grants Tech Cost Efficiencies as those three. We've got the Senior Center, well, it's the Feasibility Committee. It's not really been an ad hoc committee. We didn't really call it an ad hoc committee, though. And then the Public Safety one is an actual committee, I believe, right? It wasn't an ad hoc one, too. It's the Public Safety Building Committee.
Public Safety Building Committee?
I think would be the other one.
Yeah, I don't think that was ad hoc.
When I'm reading the first part of this, it doesn't distinguish between ad hoc and regular.
No, it doesn't. So it sounds like just about any committee is...
Yeah.
Is subject to being a, considered a special municipal employee, the way this reads.
So what's the, what's the ob shoot of this? Like, what's, what's the point?
The point is this. And this is probably a little bit radical, but let's just say...
Liability?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Piper's on the Housing Authority. Theoretically, unless she was a special municipal employee, then she should not be allowed to represent a client in front of, like, the ZBA or the Planning Board. So what you're basically doing is saying, okay, we want these particular talented people to volunteer to serve on boards for the town. However, we do not want to deprive them, shall we say, of their livelihood in front of another board.
Okay. It just seems, yeah, the way this re, it just seems like, because every committee's on here, it doesn't seem like anybody's special. It sort of seems like...
Well, I think it distinguishes from the general public.
Well, from the general public, I guess, but that's about it. I don't know. Okay, so we have a couple, a couple of possible corrections and just a double check by Ed on this. Did we have a motion? If not, let's remotion that, did we?
But are we gonna prove it? Are we gonna wait?
Or would you wanna wait on that? We can wait on that, too, if you want to.
Table it.
Table it till next meeting?
Table it.
Okay, that's fine. We'll get some research on that and just be sure that we got it correct the way it's supposed to be. That's fine. Next one, purchase orders.
Yeah, so the purchase order one, all it was was really just adding words, attracting words, changing select to select board. There was no content change. The only thing is under three, it says a purchase order request utilizing and provided spreadsheet. There was no provided spreadsheet, so I'm not, that's the only thing I wasn't really clear about. Do you know anything about that, Ed? Purchase order, it says utilizing the provided spreadsheet is required to be approved prior to purchasing. So I'm assuming there's a purchase order form?
I would, I would probably refer to it as a purchase order form, a completed purchase order form rather than a spreadsheet.
Okay.
A form rather than a spreadsheet?
Yeah. The rest of it was, is just, you know, so it reads a little bit better. Just...
Do we wanna have a form attached to this as a form to use? Do we have such a form already? Or...
I'd probably hold off on that.
Hold off on what?
We do under the current system. However, if we're gonna change financial software system shortly, it would probably be a different form.
Okay, so we won't attach it here, but we could say utilizing the approved form or something like that?
Provided by the town accountant.
Yeah.
If you wanted to.
You're utilizing the form provided by the town accountant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other changes there? Okay, all right. So with that minor change or two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Did we have a motion? Sorry, did we have a motion?
I don't think we did.
We did. Back up.
I'll make a motion to approve it as amended.
Second.
All right, thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That was a John and Joy seconded that?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. That's the second time I've done that down. Okay. Free cash, Francine. This is yours, I think?
Yeah. We looked at it last time. Just so you know, there were no changes to this and no recommended changes from the people I solicited input.
Okay.
I think when we looked at it last time in the draft form, everyone here was fine with it.
Right.
As is.
I think our one comment last time was regarding whether we should have a sentence in there or not relating to the...
Investment.
Potential investment policy, instructing the treasurer to, you know, invest our money wisely or whatever we were going to say. Since then, we did find a copy of the actual investment policy. Policy, so I'm...
Yes, that applies to...
Personally not thinking that we need to have that.
That applies to all cash and cash reasons are separate and apart from free cash.
Right. So I'm not sure that we need to have that sentence in here, in my opinion, but I'm willing to hear anybody else's.
And it's not here.
Anybody? Thoughts?
I'm fine with leaving it out until somebody raises an objection not to do it.
Okay.
Then we can amend it.
Yep, okay. So could I have a motion then to approve the language in the free cash policy as written here?
So moved.
Second.
That's a Reenie and a Joy second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes. Thank you. And the last one for tonight, I believe, is the proposed procedures and policies and regulations for the Select Board. And this is Reenie.
Yeah, so no changes other than one edit, just spelling.
Policies and number two.
Policies is plural.
Yep, number two.
Yep. No, that's pretty much it. And it basically says what we've been doing.
Right.
Just the 10-day on file and official acceptance, annual ratification. I mean, I brought up before whether or not people feel like these should be done annually, and I think the sense was that they should. So if that's the case, then...
I mean, it doesn't seem like some of these, we've had too many major changes in. I mean, I...
Yeah.
It personally, it feels like we could go two years. I don't know that every year is necessary myself.
Do you have the one that actually said it was a good idea to do them annually? What was your rationale?
Oh, just the fact that hopefully we would remember them doing them annually, where if you did them every two years or three years, we might forget.
Remember the last time? I don't think we remember the last time. Some of these haven't been done since 2017.
I know. It's been a long time since some of these were done.
I'd be fine with two years.
And number five, just need to pay attention to that one.
Yeah, because they automatically expire.
Yep, they automatically expire. And if they're not reviewed and reapproved, they're not in effect.
Number five, any policies and regulations that are not included on the annual ratification
Right.
and are not approved during the fiscal year and attached to the official file shall not be considered official approved Select Board policies and regulations so that... That does allow them to expire unless we get on track and do this every year in February, March.
Exactly.
It's like doing the debt ceiling. Once a year, we'll just vote to approve it.
All right. So we have this as is for an annual approval.
Motion to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right. John and Joy, thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll leave it annually and...
Discipline ourselves a little better going forward.
I think this was one that just got in the lost in the shuffle over, over the years here. Good. That gets us through the, these. Okay. Audit recommendations, new contract. I'm understanding, I don't think we've done the final scoring on that. Ed, do we have anything? Right.
I haven't committed it to paper as of yet. I can tell you that Melansum and their, and their new merger and their submission, every category was highly advantageous to me. I don't know if John is...
I don't have any, I mean, other than the costs, I don't have any objection to moving forward with it.
Do we know the cost? Could you share the cost with us?
What's that?
Could you share the cost with us?
I'd have to go back and take a look now.
Can we get this for sure for next, next week, vote on it?
Yeah.
At the next meeting to vote on it and get that one out of the way so we can get them underway? Cause then we've got to do the audit engagement letter, right?
Yes.
And those kinds of things. Okay. So that's gonna be on the 28th for sure. Okay?
Yes.
All right. Fire Chief Search Committee Charge. So, question mark. We sort of formed the idea of a committee.
Mm-hmm.
We've seen some information that was passed through on the electronic versions, some notations from KP Law about the difference between a strong chief and a weak chief. So that can be taken into consideration.
So...
Everybody should have seen that.
Yeah, I just need to, Ed's going to reach out to his small town administrators
Right.
group to look for information. I need to confirm, get a verbal acceptance from the individual department head that was nominated by their peers but was not at the meeting to accept.
Well, I don't, since I'm the immediate supervisor, I don't mind doing this and putting him on the spot since he is now the lone person. But at that department head meeting that you missed because you were at court, I asked the question because on the search committee for the new Fire EMS chief, there's a position for one department head. And when I asked at the meeting, all the department heads said Ian would be perfect for that.
He did that when I was absent, of course.
Yes. So I'm going, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask, would you be willing to serve in it? There we go. We have our department head.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
So I'll work up a draft of a timeline and calendar and a plan for the committee to hopefully look at parallel with the charge. And where you're gonna...
And the current job description and so forth?
Yes. Well, that would be part of the, once we get the committee together, to do that. But also, I'm thinking of, we wanna make sure to have two individual surveys, one for the existing active membership of Fire EMS to get their input, and then a community-wide so that we can, you know, be gathering...
Sure.
Input.
Okay. And you're gonna somehow, through this committee, and it's maybe early, but in terms of reaching out for a command staff from another town?
Correct.
That was the other position. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. So through your work with the stand group, you're gonna see if there is any kind of modality for a search...
Yes.
Committee charge kind of thing? And then with that, John can move forward a little bit more. Okay?
Yeah, and everything that I do communication wise outside of the town. I'll just CC the town administrator.
That'd be great.
As it's going along.
Okay.
And in terms of the email from KP Law relative to the strong chief versus weak chief, when did the town of Southampton vote in favor of the strong chief?
That's one thing I'm gonna have to go back and take a look at and confirm all those dates with the town clerk.
Cause what was referred to there was from another town. It was the same...
Right, right.
Kind of opinion, but it was, yeah, it wasn't pertinent to Southampton.
And then the other thing is, did, did the, did the town adopt the mass general laws or did they ask for a special legislation that might be a hybrid? So I will confirm that with the town clerk.
Okay. All right.
And is it town meeting that decides that? Or is it Select Board or...
Yes, it's town meeting.
Town meeting, yeah?
Correct.
I look back as far as the 70s for that, when they became the smart chief. I think it was probably during the, really three days.
Okay.
It goes back a long time. Okay. All right. That gets us through new business. Any other business that can't wait under new business? Yeah?
I have two questions. The first has to do with the, the HR update. Do you have any sense of when we're gonna get that information? The, in terms of the pay for positions through the...
Wage study?
The wage study. Thank you, John.
Yeah, the classification study?
Mm-hmm.
I can, I can ask them for an estimated timeline there. They have the information from us, and now they have to gather it from the other communities, so.
I just don't wanna be up against the deadline in terms of the budget. So that'll be plenty of time to make decisions about positions and...
I'll let you know at the next meeting.
Okay, great. And the other question has to do with your self-evaluation. Is that a separate agenda item or is that where?
It was under here somewhere.
Old business.
It's under pending or somewhere.
Under old business. Okay, we'll take it then.
Under old business, yeah.
Okay.
And I think at this point, I do not have it yet. Ed has promised that I will have it for the next meeting?
Yeah, I went and basically sick in bed for about four days, so.
Okay. We will work to get it dealt with. We know it's an issue to get done with. Okay. All right. Under old business, anything...
I have, I have one because there was one PCF that the PPB approved last night that wasn't on the agenda. It's one that has been hanging out there for a while as the PPB was looking for the fire chief to come in and clarify a few points. So I have a PCF for Timothy O'Keefe, part-time, non-benefit eligible, added duty to assist current position that has less time available to perform, will not add to budget, from firefighter, paramedic, $26.35 an hour, to as needed added quality assurance duties to $26.85 per hour.
I believe that's retro till July 1st.
Say.
Yeah.
Yes, effective date July 1st, 2022. Thanks, John.
I'll, I'll move to approve it.
Second.
Do we have any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah.
About what that's, what that entails?
It's quality assurance duties that needs to be done to maintain the compliance of the ambulance, reviewing medical runs and calls and versus having one dedicated individual who would do that for additional hours, not being on the ambulance, who now needs to retire due to age. The roles and responsibilities are being divided up amongst three people, and that's one of three. So the way he does it is they get a 50 cent increase in their hourly rate versus hours that they actually perform it, and then it becomes an ongoing stipend, so to speak, or an incentive.
So every time they work, regardless of the hours, they're getting an additional amount of money?
Their hourly rate goes up. Yep.
And this is in lieu of a one-time position? Did we have a one-time position in the past that did this?
Well, in the, in the past, he had a, a full-time paramedic qualified person that no longer worked the ambulance and did 20 to 30 hours in the office doing paperwork. But non-scheduled.
And so that paperwork person, shall we say, admin person type?
Was, was forced to retire because of age.
By age, and so now that position is...
But the work is still there, so he's divvying it out to three other individuals to do.
How come we're getting it so late?
Well, we got it, we got it in May, I believe.
Yes.
After Bradley's signature. And it, we didn't see that department head in our committee meeting until Monday night. So I, I think it slipped through the cracks.
Do you require that of department heads?
Well, we held, we held it, and it was noted on our minutes that we were waiting for the department head to come in and have, have an explanation with us.
So this fell through the cracks, in other words, basically?
Yeah, basically.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, I think we have a motion and a second. Did I hear one? Yes?
Yep.
Yes.
Everybody remind me who it was?
I made the motion.
I seconded.
All right. Thank you. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Hearing done. This passes. Thank you. All right. So then just under old business, and then we'll come back to these other PCFs. I think we've covered a few of these. We've talked about, I'm not sure if there's anything else to say about COVID at the moment, offhand.
Well, they expect in April to eliminate the emergency, which is gonna be significant.
Yeah. So that means people will end up having to pay, right, for testing and all those kinds of things that have been free, masks and whatever else by the government? That's gonna change as of about May.
May 11th, I believe it is.
Yeah.
I thought it was April.
I think it's May. I think it's, I could be wrong. I think it's May. Okay. Voiceover IP, I think we've heard. We've, we've got it here. We've had a couple glitches with Verizon, but it is being worked on very...
Is it being used currently?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah. I just happened to notice there are, there are still old phones in the offices or...
There could be. They may be hooked up or not hooked up. If they're hooked up, they don't work.
Okay.
Okay, we've talked about the recruitment process for the fire chief. And Francine, you mentioned the community cannabis payment mini-committee that's going to get, get formed. And I think the idea would be for them, if they wanna go ahead and create the idea of a draft charge and bring it to us, and we will surely tinker with it, I'm sure.
Right.
Okay. Town administrator evaluation. I would really look to get Ed's self-evaluation as soon as we can so that we can work on getting that finalized. No matter what, we need to get it finalized by the middle of March in terms of scoring and discussion, et cetera. Associate members PSBC, I don't know if there's been any discussion on that at the meeting?
Hasn't really been a meeting except for the joint meeting, so that really hasn't...
Hasn't come up for discussion. Okay. We'll just keep it on here as old business or leave it there until we know. Okay. And then the cemetery water main repairs, this is one that I think, along with a couple of these things that are somewhat time-sensitive, just trying to get, get things ready for spring and...
Yeah, I'll be reaching out to the vendor.
Yeah. So we've got some ideas of vendors, but we need to see if they're available, and they need to give us a quote or whatever, right, on that?
Okay, so you're gonna reach out to the vendor. So this, does this have to go out for bid? Or has it already?
It already has.
It went out once before.
It's already been out, and it's already been approved for a particular vendor?
Yeah.
Now, is there any relation between this and the water main break that happened?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay.
That was down here at East Street.
I'm just concerned because this was something that had to go back to town meeting because of the time it took and a number of other problems with the price going up. So I just don't want this to happen again. So if, this could be a higher priority. We know it's getting warmer weather, and I just think this needs to get taken care of before the price goes back up again.
Right. Yep. Okay. Yeah, no, I think the water main break, and thank goodness that got fixed pretty quickly that night. People worked pretty hard during the night to get that fixed down here at East Street and the fire station.
Yeah, but kudos to both the Highway Department and the Police Department because they know they're both out just about all night long.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Glad it got done with minimal disruption, although people were a little surprised with some detours, I think, but...
Now, was that section part of the current funding that Water Department has got, both from ARPA?
It is. It's that, one of those, those sections. It's actually between, between East Street and heading up to Palmero Meadow.
Okay.
Yeah, they did this section by the Manhattan River Bridge up to Former Road, but everything else still has to be done from Former Road up to Palmero Meadow.
Yep.
Yeah. But is that the next, are there two sections or is that one?
It's three sections altogether.
It's three altogether, right?
So it would be the third section.
I was just curious if...
I think that would probably be in the third.
Third section, I think. Okay. Let's move on to some PCFs. So we've got a few more here. The first two, I think I will take responsibility for. Davis O'Connell Dispatcher and Anthony Yon Dispatcher. These two came before us at the end of December. We went ahead, had some discussion about them. The, all the paperwork in your package is the same as to what we had seen and talked about back in December. We went ahead and did a vote, but I forgot to call for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve Davis O'Connell and Anthony Yon effective 12/20/2022.
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on that?
I just have one question.
Yep.
It says CPR training, eight hours. Is that typical?
Yes. Eight hours, I don't...
It's on the thing here, conditional offer of employment. It says CPR training...
I don't think CPR is eight hours. Whatever our, we have a certified CPR instructor, whatever.
Okay.
Okay. Is it American Heart Association? Is it the, okay. Okay. Yeah, so these were, these were two that we had moved on, and our diligent note taker, as she was transcribing our minutes, recognized as she listened to the tape that we hadn't actually called for the motion and the second. So she caught that, so that's why they're back. So we have a motion now and a second?
And this would be retroactive to 12/20/22.
12/20/22 for both of them. Davis O'Connell and Anthony Yon. All right. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
I think we just...
I just did that. Sorry. We had the motion and second. Can I have a vote, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
And no opposition. All right. Next one, we have Ryan Holmes, Police.
So I guess my, my, I wonder if at a point of order if we should pass on that at the moment. And it sounds like if there was any discussion on that, that would happen in executive session, so save that after exiting executive session, coming back into public session, and taking the action on there as needed.
Is that qualifying as the executive session item? It's already been, it's been addressed by the union and by...
No, it has not yet.
It has not.
Okay, oh, okay.
All right, so then with that...
I don't know procedurally whether if...
This is part of the topic we were going to have in executive session?
Yes.
So would it be, it's probably not appropriate to act on it now?
Yeah, okay, then let's, let's hold off on it until after we hear more about this in executive session, then. Okay, thanks for that. All right, moving on down. John, why don't you take these, most of these look like they're, the first few, anyway, take mini-groups, maybe the firefighter types, and whatever we got there that are resignations, or...
Well, you're right, so we got Benjamin Miller firefighter, so motion to approve PCF for Benjamin Miller firefighter, paramedic, part-time, non-benefited, and as-needed, 2561 per hour.
Okay.
And then I'll take all the resignations together.
All right, let's have a second, and then discussion.
Second.
All right, Joy, second, any discussion on that?
Can you just hang on one second, I'm just going to get to it.
Yep, hold on a second.
All the other...
Benjamin Miller on this one.
All right.
Here we all find the right ones.
Currently has four years as paramedic level, and is available to cover nights for the department.
Okay, any questions, anybody?
One second, okay, I'm just getting through all the Treasury Department. Tyler, okay, the one before that, then.
Yep.
Benjamin Miller's a, a...
There is.
Yeah, first one on the list.
Yeah, no comment.
Okay, all right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who seconded that?
I did.
Joy?
That's Joy. And did we skip over one?
Uh, no, this was Benjamin Miller.
Yeah, but did we skip over Kristi Facto, the resignation?
We already did hers in the beginning.
Her signature is required, we voted on it there.
We did that back under the appointments and resignations on the first page with Joan. There were, Kristi and Joan were on the first page of the agenda.
Yes, but this is a PCF.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the PCF for Kristi Baggo, Assistant Treasurer resignation.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, got it.
Make a motion to approve as a package, one, two, three, four, five resignations from the Fire Department, Tyler Alberti firefighter, Tyler Limongas of Fire EMS, Stephen King EMS Lieutenant, Patrick Day probationary firefighter, Dylan Foulter Melindi firefighter EMS.
Second.
All right, so a motion and a second by Rini, discussion, these are, are these people that are just not been on the roster, or they're on the roster but haven't been able or haven't needed to work for a while, and we're kind of cleaning up the roster, or...
Yes, PPP acted on these back on January of 19, and that was the exact reason the chief does this, tries to do this on an annual basis.
Okay. All right. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, hearing no oppositions, leave all five of those, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five.
Next is a motion to approve the PCF for Timothy Huber, van driver, part-time, non-benefited. This says 19-plus hours at $17 per hour.
It's supposed to be less than 19.
So we had a discussion, yeah, we had a discussion as to whether or not it should be less than 20, to not kick him benefits.
Right.
And the explanation justification that we were giving is, this is a non-scheduled position.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the person, given that it's one person working five days a week, the likelihood that they're going to exceed 20 hours is high.
Yes, and we have had a past practice with a previous driver that went over 20 hours a week and became benefitted, so my recommendation would be this, this would be 19 and a half hours or less.
So amend proposed status to 19.5 or less?
And you know that...
Under the number of weekly hours?
And I guess everyone is aware of the fact that this is the only driver, and if this person is not available, there are no van services.
So if...
If they're not available because they're likely to exceed their 19 and a half hours per week.
Correct.
Is there any way that we could stipulate that anything over, we recognize, given the solo position that we're in right now, if this happened to go over 19 and a half hours, that still would not make them benefit eligible?
I think it becomes a management process, because I think it has to be at average over 26 weeks, it's a period of time.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, so if you diligently track it, you can, but...
No.
So, you know, that's also the underlying justification from the department head is for the increase in pay.
Right.
I believe they're actively searching.
Yeah, they are, I think we approved a PCF, PRF rather.
We did, I think we had that for advertising, so, and we don't have a sense whether we're exceeding the 19 and a half hours now, though, right? We don't know anything right now.
Well, I think that in an effort to try to meet the demand of rides, I think there was, this particular person was increasing, and then it was just too much. So right now, there, there've been a significant reduction in the amount of rides available. I think they, I heard there was about 120 average, average per month, and I think there was less than 110 this past, currently because of the inability to have a second driver.
Mm-hmm.
And I just want to remind everybody that the major reason why seniors in town access these rides is to go to medical appointments or to get food. So I think it's very important that we have two to three drivers at any given point in time.
Yeah.
But I think we also have to follow within the restrictions of payroll in terms of benefits. I think we got ourselves into a lot of trouble last time this happened.
We did.
Okay, so we have an amended PCF here for 19.5 hours or less, then.
Or as John said, you know, if they're not to exceed, if the overage on occasion goes over 19 and a half, not for a 26-week period, I mean, they'd have to consistently do it for a 26-week period, which is fair, it's unlikely.
Right.
Then they wouldn't be bumped into that benefit category.
What exactly is the parameter?
If we maintain, you know, accurate documentation of those occasions, those few occasions within that 20-week, 26-week period, that they did in fact exceed, but it wasn't a pattern, it was not a consistent pattern.
So if, if this week was 19 and next week was 22?
Right.
That 22 would be okay in order to provide service, but they still wouldn't qualify for benefits?
It's when your average of time over a rolling 26-week period exceeds 20 hours.
So there is that flexibility there that I would, I would like to see built into this, unless everybody feels it's too cumbersome.
Are we able to really track it and be sure of it, in terms of keeping the hours?
Up to the department head to do that.
There's a payroll every two weeks.
It failed once, that's all I'm going to say.
What do you mean it failed once?
Well, we had a problem with the earlier van driver.
With the previous van driver, yes, I got you.
That's why, that's why it's cautious.
Also worry, worry a little bit about, is this a precedence, and are we holding various departments to, I mean, obviously, Fire EMS is also very important, like, I think that we just have to make sure that we're holding departments consistently, you know, accountable to, like, there's not different rules for different departments.
Yeah, I know.
But well, just on that point, though, there is a different, different standard for the Fire EMS.
Yes, there is.
Yeah.
By law.
Yes.
Not by us, by statute.
Correct.
I wonder if, just talking out loud here, if one of the reasons why, I don't know, if, I don't, I have no idea how many applications have come in, if any have, how long it's been posted, but I'm wondering if one of the setbacks is, is if the wage is set at 1561. If we're, if we're recognizing that this, that we feel we need to pay $17 for this job, I get it that he has time in the position on that, but is 1561 really the floor?
Mm-hmm.
Is it $16? And this person's at 17 because they've been there for over a year.
Right.
I wonder if that would attract other folks, because really what you're looking for is somebody in town who's retired, a perfect candidate, someone in town who's retired that just wants to get out of the house and make a couple bucks.
I just think that when, you know, you're talking about helping seniors with driving, I mean, I, I think that that's a tremendous amount of responsibility, so to be, you know, at minimum wage is, you know, unrealistic, frankly.
Mm-hmm.
But that's what's happened with nurses aides, it's what's happened with firefighters, it's what's happened with van drivers. These are some of the lowest-paid people, and they're providing direct personal assistance, it just doesn't seem quite right.
Yeah, well, this PCF has got it at 17 for this position, I don't know what, what the one is being recruited at, but what is written on the form here is 19 hours plus, but what we're saying now is 19 and a half hours or less, right? That's the...
Yes.
Amended proposition here, so...
And for the record, there's a retro payment of $68.81.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that, okay. That goes back to the beginning of January, is that it?
January 3rd.
Right, okay. All right, so I think we have, do we have a motion then with these, this amended amount of 19 and a half?
Yes.
Or less? That was John, yes. Anybody second that, please? Just for formality's sake?
Second.
Joy, okay.
And just to mention that this is actually, the funding for this is out of the Fred Grant.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next thing.
Okay, Francine abstained, okay.
If I could take the next three up.
Yes, go ahead.
Motion to approve PCF for Erica Rubner, Fire EMS, change in salary, part-time, non-benefited to 2526. Russell Hatch II, Fire EMS, change in salary, part-time, non-benefit, 1776. And Mackenzie Williamson, Fire EMS, change in salary, part-time, non-benefited, 2426 an hour. And I believe all, all three cases, they have achieved their certification, and the certificates are attached, and the increases correspond to the Fire, Fire Department pay scale that we've approved. They are retro because of the, the chief doesn't file them until the employee actually brings in the certificate.
All right, so these are three of them?
I believe so.
Three, two of whom look like they're paramedic firefighters, one is an EMT basic, Russell Hatch, oh, no, maybe, no.
Yeah, and they all did the Hampshire County Fire Academy basic.
But moving up to EMT basic, yeah, okay.
And Hatch is, looks like it's retro to Jan, July 1?
Yep, so is Mackenzie.
Okay, let's get these clear here, so with...
July 1. Needs to be a little bit of, seems like some of these are on the late side.
So is the first one, is Rubner retroactive or not? No.
No. It's one, the 13th versus the 16th, right. But the other two are?
That's 116 for Rubner, and then start dates on...
Yeah, they graduate in April 10, 2022, but certificates were delayed.
But not in the case of...
So for Williamson, he, okay, so you're saying the effective date on that one is 7/1/22?
Yeah.
Williams?
Because he can't go farther back.
Right, right, and the same with Hatch, so...
Correct.
In other words, the chief was waiting until the certificate actually got issued in order to bring these forward.
Right, for him to get it and to find time to do the administrative work to submit the paperwork.
Okay.
Okay.
Everybody clear on what we have here in front of us?
Yeah.
All right, I think we had a motion from John, and we had a second, did we, by? Make sure I didn't miss anybody, who seconded that, please? Did we have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, Joy had seconded it already.
Joy did, all right, thank you.
Yeah, I did.
I just wanted to not make the mistake I did last time, I have a short memory here. All right, all those in favor of these three PCFs?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
And then I believe the last is a PCF for Wendy Uzo, Police Department, part-time, non-benefited resignation effective January 26, 23.
Second.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Oh, yes, go ahead, Francine?
I move to approve the resignation of Wendy Iozzo.
Okay, Francine move, Rini second?
Yes.
All right, Rini second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's approved. All right, thank you very much. We already did the election workers, I believe, so we're good. We have just a couple things to sign off on, which is the Greenway charge, Greenway Committee charge that we had talked about at the last meeting, so we'd already voted on that, I believe?
Yes.
We changed that to quarterly meetings, at least quarterly meetings, and a nine-member rail, trail committee, so that's just for signature, we already, I believe, we don't need to vote on that again, right? We're just signing?
No, we're just signing.
Okay, and then the charge for the open space committee charge, this is one we actually had approved back in September, we never actually...
Signed it.
Signed it. Somehow we didn't, we missed signing it. So this is one where, this also changed the open space committee to nine members, six elected by or representing other committees, and three at large, appointed by the select board. So those are just for signature, and we'll get those signed tonight.
Motion to approve the minutes of December 6, 2022.
All right, can I have a second, please? John motion, who seconds?
Second.
Francine seconds, anybody have any comments, discussion?
Let me just look at it.
On December 6 minutes, we have two sets of minutes, check through.
Yeah, I have a question, December 6. I think it probably should say Jeff's last name under public comment.
Public comments. Oh, resident of Lead Mine Road, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have that, right?
We should have it, under public comment, do you see that, Ed? On the, under, first page toward the bottom, under public comment, we just have the person's first name, the resident, we must have a record of who he...
Hmm? Jeff's last name.
Jeff's last name, under public comment, at the bottom of the first page there.
Probably wasn't clear on the audio. I can have, I can have the checked.
I mean, it's probably in the street listing, anyway.
Yeah, we can find it in the street list or somewhere, I'm sure.
Look up via his address.
Yeah, yeah, via his address, yeah. Any other comments or corrections in here?
Um, yeah.
Looks like a very thorough set of minutes here, yeah, go ahead, Rini.
Um, under, let me just see, I highlighted something, Joy Piper Conservation Commission last night, there was an application from Lexi Richard to be on the board, there is a proposal to put a new senior center by the fire station, I don't think that's accurate.
Where, where are you?
I'm on page two of six, at the bottom, where it says Joy's comment.
There's an...
There was a proposal to put a new senior center by the fire station, that's not exactly accurate.
No, I don't know, I don't think I said that.
You're right.
Shall we just take that out? Is that the...
Yes.
Yeah.
So after, after the appointment of Lexi Richard, application from Lexi Richard to be on the board, take out, there is a proposal to put a new senior center by the fire station.
Here you are.
Where are you?
I'm on two of six at the bottom, the fourth line from the bottom.
So where it says select board, Joy Piper?
The second line says, there is a proposal to put a new senior center by the fire station. We're just going to remove that.
Okay.
Great.
And then I, I just have a question based on this, just refresh my memory, I thought we were going to get a follow-up on whether or not any time nutrition?
Oh, yeah, I...
It's not on the list?
I did email out about it, but I will follow up again.
Okay, it doesn't, you know, we can talk about it after, but...
Um, I did, now that I remember, there was something from the Senior Center Feasibility Committee emailing Conservation Commission about...
Probably about the wetlands.
The wetlands around the fire station.
It says, it was a site under consideration, and so they were, I think, reaching out to Conservation Commission to determine what history they have.
Yeah, what the wetlands around the fire station were like, so I don't know if you want me to reword, word that and send something? But, um. I would just put discussion around, in regard, discussion with Conservation Commission around wetlands around fire department.
Yeah, current fire department, yeah.
All right, so with those changes, we had a motion, I think by John, and a second by Joy, is that right?
Sure, yeah, I seconded, I don't, I don't think I did, but yeah, I'll second that, sure.
I got to start writing these down, sorry. All right, I think we had a motion by John.
Yes.
And I've had a second by Francine.
By Francine, all right.
Yes.
Francine seconded, okay, any, with those small changes, any other discussion? If not, could we have a vote, yes, thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
All right?
Motion to approve December 20, 2022 minutes, and we'll point out that the agenda is mistyped, indicating 2023, which has not yet happened in time.
Where, on the, on the agenda?
On our, on this agenda.
On the agenda.
Yes, on the current agenda, not the previous agenda or the future agenda.
There we go, on the actual agenda, okay. All right, so we have a motion, could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Francine second, okay, anybody noticed anything in particular there?
Nope.
All right, okay, not hearing any corrections, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, minutes are approved. All right, and that takes care of the minutes. Don't know that we have any updates on the pending items, we've heard a little bit about East Street tonight, we've worked up a little bit of the statement of work for some painting and carpentry work to be done on the Old Town Hall, so I'm working with Ed on that to see if we can get that out on the street pretty soon, along with the hazard mitigation plan statement of work. No news yet on the Palmero Meadow Road water issue, the conservation property, that's still being discussed, Ed, by.
Still being discussed.
By Water Commission, okay. All right, I don't think we've got any other items and issues there. Therefore, select board is going to go into a short executive session tonight, let me just read the reasons for that.
Are we returning to?
Uh, we won't be returning after this, so we are, I'll just read the motions for this, right, and then, and then we adjourn?
Because we did approve that piece.
We might want to talk about that.
We might have to have the.
Because we skipped over.
Oh, we skipped over that piece, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, you're right.
Now, maybe, I don't know, maybe we're not, maybe that is what we want to do, is not return to public session for a vote, but.
Why don't we leave it open, we could always adjourn.
We didn't leave it on here to return to public session, so I would say no.
No.
That we're not coming back in the public session, so that item we skipped is tabled.
We'll have to skip it for now.
Yeah, so it's tabled, okay.
Okay, so, I will read the reasons for going into executive session now?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, executive session pursuant to the provisions of General Master and Law, Chapter 38, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, police. Executive session pursuant to provisions of MGL 30A, chapter, section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, executive session minutes of January 31, 2023. Could I have a motion to move into executive session, please?
So moved.
All right, Rini moves?
I'll second it and add, for the purposes of the record, that the chair is inviting the police chief into executive session.
Correct, that is true, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Lumber, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Roden, aye.
Piper, aye.
Bowles, aye, okay, we are adjourned at 8:12, thereabouts. Thank you very much, we will move into executive session for a few minutes.